So I'd like to call the December 12th, 2024 Surf City Planning Board Meeting to order. I need to get approval to revise the agenda to include the November minutes. Make a motion to approve.
I second.
And who seconded? Mr. Kane, thank you.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Okay, so now I would like to get approval to adopt the agenda. I motion to adopt.
Who actually seconded it?
Either.
Either. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, agenda is approved. Next, let's get approval for the November 14th, 2024 Planning Board Meeting Minutes. I motion for approval. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Amy, do we have any public comment?
We did not when I looked, but I will verify.
Who's checking for you?
Who's checking? Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so first on our agenda is rezoning request for JH Batts rezoning. I think Sean's going to be presenting tonight.
First time.
Thank you.
The first item that we have on the agenda tonight is P 2457.
One second, Sean.
Yeah, I'm sorry Frankie would like to recuse himself from this.
Oh, gotcha.
I have a motion to recuse Frankie.
Make a motion to recuse Frankie.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay Frankie, we'll bring you back.
So again, this is a straight rezoning request from RA to R5 for CADJ Finance. Tonight Jesse Zimmer on behalf of Dextacy LLC is requesting the approval of a general use zoning map amendment to rezone two tracts of land totaling 29.08 acres from RA Rural Agricultural to R5 Residential District. The subject properties are along JH Batts Road and may be further identified by Pender County GIS PIN 4235-343825000. Location map is provided. The applicant is requesting to rezone approximately 29.08 acres of land from Rural Agricultural to R5 Residential District. Since this is a general rezoning request, a site plan is not included in the application. If approved, the property could be developed to include any of the uses allowed by right or by special use permit in the R5 zoning district. The applicant would then bring the site plan to the town for review and approval. The site plan or subdivision would have to adhere to all requirements of the R5 zoning districts and all local, state, and federal regulations. Depending on the development chosen, the additional approval may require up to Planning Board Recommendation and Council Approval. The existing zoning is rural agricultural and this district is established as a district in which the principal use of land is for low density, single-family residential purposes. The regulations of this district encourage rural farming activities and preservation of open space. The district is designed to promote urban low-density residential development, not requiring urban services while maintaining prime farmland and a rural lifestyle. The proposed zoning for R5 is established as a district in which the principal use of land is for single-family homes and duplexes excluding manufactured homes and recreational vehicles. The regulations of this district permit intensive developments provided the necessary public and/or community water and adequate sewage disposal facilities are available. You do have a list of allowable uses in the R5 as well as the special use permit for that district. The subject property has direct access to JH Batts Road and the roundabout at Charlie Medlin Drive and Tortuga Drive. General rezonings do not provide site-specific data, therefore a trip generation summary is not provided. If developed, the applicant will provide a trip generation summary to determine the adequacy of existing facilities. This site will receive water and sewer from the town of Surf City and approval of this rezoning request will not place the applicant on the sewer waitlist. A site-specific plan will need to be submitted and approved by the town council or staff before being placed on the waitlist. The Pender County GIS environmental layer shows the potential of wetland areas on the parcel south of JH Batts Road. The applicant will be responsible for having the site reviewed for wetlands prior to the submission of a site-specific plan. The zoning surrounding the property is the east side of both tracts, primarily a butt C3 zoning with one small mixed-use and one small pud zone property. The portion between Charlie Medlin Drive and JH Batts butts R5 on the west and MU and MFC on the north. The property south of JH Batts butts R5M to the west and MHS to the south. You also have a table here with adjacent uses and zoning to the northeast, south, and west. You'll see to the north that it's vacant with apartments, low-density residential to the east and the south and vacant on the west as well as townhomes, retail, boat storage, and mini-storage. The Town of Surf City 2022 Land Use Plan provides Chapter 5 Land Use and Growth Management as well as Map 5-3 Future Land Use Map. The Land Use Plan is used to guide rezoning requests as well as assigned zoning during the annexation process. If the proposed rezoning request is approved, the future land use map will automatically be updated with the new zoning. If the request is denied, the future land use map will remain unchanged. The table below provides the existing and proposed future land use map categories. Currently, it is in the neighborhood mixed-use and proposed will put it into coastal residential. Neighborhood mixed-use allows for a transition between more intense commercial, office, and residential development to lower-density residential neighborhoods as well as opportunities for strategic low-intensity nodes of commercial activity. The neighborhood mixed-use category is primarily dedicated to non-residential uses that provide services, entertainment, and amenities to residents within a three-mile radius. This future land use category should be composed of a mixture of integrated commercial, office, institutional, and residential uses. The future land use classification is not intended to be solely reserved for mixed-use developments. Appropriate uses include neighborhood-scale retail, restaurant, and office establishments. Large-scale or intense commercial establishments, multifamily development, and industrial operations are not appropriate. Building footprints are generally limited to 15,000 square feet in size or smaller. For the proposed land use category of coastal residential, this supports the town's coastal character and natural habitat as it is a top priority for residents. Coastal residential land uses are near estuary waters such as coastal creeks and the intracoastal waterway. Appropriate uses include residential development with low overall density, community recreation and open-use spaces, open-space uses, and water-based recreation uses. Unencumbered access to public trust, coastal waters, and maximum development setback from the shoreline is highly encouraged. Clustering of new communities is also encouraged. To support the adjacent coastal surface water quality, low-impact development is encouraged and general lots should maximize pervious surfaces. The requested R5 residential development allows for single and two-family development, which is consistent with the existing mixed-use neighborhood. However, it does not provide a commercial component. The proposed R5 more closely resembles the coastal residential land use category. For the policies that support from the Comprehensive Land Use Plan, Objective 5.1, the states to maintain the small-town, family-friendly atmosphere at Surf City by encouraging low-density residential development, compatible business establishments, preserve natural resource areas, and parks/recreation facilities. And for the policies that we found that do not support, Policy 5.1.F Managed Growth. The town supports managing growth and development based on, 1, compatibility with town goals; 2, the capacity of the environment; 3, densities allowable in sensitive areas; 4, the availability of existing and planned support facilities and services; and 5, sufficiency of infrastructure. Policy 5.1.B Land Use Plan Consistency. The town generally requires that any official land use and development-related actions such as zonings, rezonings, tax amendments, and special use permits remain consistent with the policies adopted in this plan and any other applicable plan. Any actions that are inconsistent with such plans should require a statement from the Planning Board and Town Council approving such decisions as do the end conditions taken into account and amending the town's development regulations to meet the development needs of the community and why the action was reasonable and in the public interest. Per the Town Ordinance Requirements, Appendix A, Section 12.3.3 of the Town's ordinances provides the requirements for approving a rezoning application. Statement of reasonableness and plan consistency shall be submitted. The statement shall consider the ordinance below. When adopting or rejecting any petition for a zoning map amendment, a statement analyzing the reasonableness of the proposed rezoning shall be approved by the Town Council. The statement of reasonableness may consider, among other factors, the size, physical conditions, and other attributes of the area proposed to be rezoned. The benefits and detriments to the landowners, the neighbors, and the surrounding community. The relationship between the current actual and permissible development on the tract and adjoining areas, and the development that would be permissible under the proposed amendment. Finally, why the action taken is in the public interest, and any change conditions warranting the amendment. Staff is submitting the proposed general use rezoning application for the Planning Board's consideration. This proposal is consistent with one objective and inconsistent with two policies from the Town of Surf City 2022 Land Use Plan. As noted above, the residential component is a part of the neighborhood mixed-use land use category. However, low-density residential uses are not consistent with the existing land use category. This property is adjacent to the coastal residential future category and is consistent with the goals of this category. The plan does support a mix of uses as a transition between the more intense C3 zoning and residential zoning. However, this R5 rezoning request would allow more intense residential development that may be implied in the coastal residential land use category. You all, the Planning Board, will need to vote to recommend approval or denial. Staff has provided a statement for each option below. To approve, a motion must be made to approve the zoning map amendment and to make a finding that the approval is consistent with the following policies and goals in the Surf City 2022 Land Use Plan. The proposal is consistent with the following objectives as noted in the staff report. Objective 5.1, and to deny, motion to deny the zoning map amendment and to find that the proposal is inconsistent with the Surf City 2022 Land Use Plan. While R5 Residential's principal use of land is for single-family homes and duplexes, the regulations of this district permit intensive development while being the densest option applied to our zoning districts. The proposal is inconsistent with the following objectives and policies as noted in the staff report. Policy 5.1.F and Policy 5.1.B. You're welcome. It's a long one. Do you all have any questions for me regarding the application?
I think you covered it.
Okay.
Mr. Zimmer has been given the opportunity before the meeting, he did not want to speak. He's happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Does anybody have questions for Mr. Zimmer?
I will state just one thing. Well, I know that he talked about
Jesse, tell us your name.
Jesse Zimmer. Thank you, everyone. He talked about density. I've tried to do MU where it was a little more commercial. It got rejected. We're just trying to do, it's not, it's not real dense, it's, it's R5. We're not saying all lots would be 5,000, it's just the next level. So if you go from commercial to us, it's R5, and then it goes less dense. So it's almost, we've got to kind of fit somewhere. I've tried to do a commercial and was rejected, so this is my next shot. So I'm just trying to stay with the conformity of the policies that say, you know, you go dense, then you go a little less dense, then you go less and less and less. So it's hard for me to go MU or RA, which there's people after me that are R5. So for me to go even R10 or stay where I am, I feel like I'm the most unconforming out there where I would, they're, under the land use plan, they want a minimum of 15,000 square feet. Currently, it's 20,000. So I would be the most non-conforming piece of property on the island if I stayed where I was. So I've tried to go MU, I've tried to do mixed-use, but it was rejected. So if you have any questions, let me know. We're just trying.
Understood.
Thank you, Jesse.
The one issue before was access to the property east of Batts Road. And that just the one entrance. And I know there was talk of possibly acquiring some land off of one of these other side roads off of 50 to get access, more access to that area.
So with the straight rezoning, we can't really ask, we can't request that they provide an additional access or anything. We can't look at any kind of site-specific restraint. All we're looking at is the uses that are allowed in that zoning ordinance. We're not looking at the number that could be in there or whatnot, just does this zoning fit here?
Well, I'll just have to say that I have a problem with him going to the most dense that's allowable. And it's inconsistent with the coastal.
Residential coastal.
Yes, that plan.
Any other comments? Do I have a motion? I'll motion to deny. I have a motion for denial. Do I have a second?
Or a second.
So I have a first and a second for denial of the JH Batts rezoning. All in favor? Any opposed? So then Amy, if we're, do we have to state the denial information?
The sentence would have been, I make a motion to deny based on Ms. Sally, if you would read that sentence.
Those two policies.
Inconsistency with the, read the policy or the plan?
Under Planning Board Action, he didn't.
Zoning map amendment. What else am I supposed to read? Can I read it for her? The motion is to deny the zoning map amendment and to find that the proposal is inconsistent with the Surf City 2022 Land Use Plan. While R5 Residential's principal use of land is for single-family homes and duplexes, the regulations of this district permit intense development while being the densest option applied to our zoning districts. The proposal was inconsistent with the following objectives and policies as noted in the staff report. Policy 5.1.F and Policy 5.1.B.
Thank you.
Are we ready to move on?
Move.
Okay. So next on the agenda is the site plan approval for mini-storage at 14225 NC Highway 50.
In your packet tonight is a request from Mr. Michael Afifi of TI Endeavors. Stroud Engineering is the engineer on this site. We are requesting, or Mr. Afifi is requesting site plan approval for the attached storage unit project. The proposed development includes constructing a 5,200-square-foot flex-use building, five storage buildings for a total of 34,500 square feet, and 23 RV trailer storage spaces. The total site area is 3.02 acres with approximately 1.7 acres being disturbed. The property is located behind the existing ANA Builders Office Building and is a part of the overall plan for the development. A location and zoning map has been provided in your packet for your use. The subject property will utilize the existing ANA Builders Access Realty driveways. The existing driveway provides a separate ingress and egress movement. The site provides a one-way access pattern to the property to be utilized as storage. An updated NCDOT driveway permit may be required. The site will receive water and sewer from the town of Surf City. An NCDQ State Stormwater Permit was issued for the existing project. As a part of this site plan, the applicant has worked with NCDQ to provide a modify, a modification to the pond that will accommodate both the existing and proposed impervious areas. The wetland areas located along the rear of the property will not be disturbed during the construction of this project. They don't have to add any additional sidewalk or bike pad facilities as that was done as a part of the development upfront. The proposed site plan provides for off-street parking for the Flex Space Building for Town Ordinances of one space per 400 square feet, so they have 13 parking spaces, one of which is handicap. We do not provide designated parking requirements for storage units, so there are none shown on the plan as most people just pull up in front of their unit. Appendix A, Section 5.11 Mini Storage Facilities requires that a dense vegetative buffer be provided. The applicant's intent is to utilize their existing vegetation. However, when it's under construction, if we go out there and that does not meet the requirements and doesn't screen it, we will require them to add additional vegetation. Mr. Afifi is aware of that and it will be noted as a part of the approval. The proposed project is located behind an existing office building and does not have, does not front the road. Architectural renderings have been provided for your review. The applicant has provided brick wainscoting for the portions of the building facing the roadway. Through discussions with planning staff, the applicant has agreed to add awnings and lighting to provide additional elements. We've also spoken with Mr. Afifi and we are still working a little bit on that Flex Space Building as that's the only building that will have a primary facade that really sees customers. So they will be adding additional faux windows and lighting to break up that, that frontage. Staff recommends approval of the site plan as submitted with the revised architectural elements required.
Have to approve those, right?
Yes, ma'am, they will be worked out before they go to council. They will be finalized. Mr. Afifi and I have been working back and forth on them. They will be finalized prior to council and will be a part of the council packet.
It's pretty straightforward, so I mean, I make a recommendation to approve as submitted with the revised architectural provisions for Amy.
I'll second that.
I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion is carried. Next, we have assignment of zoning for Morris Annexation.
So as y'all know, every time we have an annexation that comes into town, council tasks the planning board with providing a zoning to be added to that. So the town, the subject properties are located in the southeast quadrant of the US Highway 17 and Man Hollow Church Road intersection. The parcel IDs are provided in your packet. The total, the parcels together, all three total 90.449 acres. You have a vicinity map in your packet as well as the zoning map, which is shown on the screen. Our GIS tech, Jordan, was able to put the Pender County zoning on here, so y'all may have noticed that it looks a little bit different. We do have the PD and the Pender County zoning of RP shown as well, just for your knowledge. The parcels are currently contiguous with several Surf City properties. The first off US 17 is zoned C3 Extended Commercial. The first off US 17 is zoned C3 Extended Commercial. The second to the south, known as the Spiller Track, is zoned CZ5 for the future Evolve apartment development, with the remainder of the property having a C3 commercial underlying district. The most eastern parcel abuts another town property currently zoned R10. And finally, town parcels to the north are zoned R15. The parcels to the north off of Manhollow Church Road are located in Pender County and have a residential performance district zoning. The residential performance district is intended to allow a variety of residential uses and densities, limiting, limited commercial activities and agritourism. Lastly, the parcel directly across NC Highway 17 to the west is zoned Planned Development District. With Pender County zoning, this district allows for greater freedom in providing a mix of uses within one development, including a mix of housing types, lot sizes, densities, and non-residential use. In other words, this is Pender County's mixed-use district. So, you have a table, kind of going through those zonings and the land uses. The Town of Surf City's comprehensive land use plan, future land use map, shows this area as mainland residential. Mainland residential is within certain pockets of Surf City and the surrounding area. Both single-family and two-family housing types are permitted while disallowing more intensive development. This moderate residential intensity allows for some housing choice while limiting density and scale. Most non-residential development is discouraged to maintain the neighborhood's character. So, you'll notice in your packet that the desired uses are single-family, two-family townhomes, recreation park, and open space, with the undesired being commercial development where not appropriately integrated into the surrounding residential development, as well as multifamily residential. The applicant has requested an R5M and C3 zoning designation on their application. Per the town's recently adopted land use plan, our R5M Residential Manufactured Home District is established as a residential district in which the principal use of land is for single-family homes, manufactured homes, manufactured home parks, tiny home communities, and recreational vehicles. This district permits intensive development provided special flood hazards are not present. The C3 Extended Commercial District provides for commercial uses which are suitable, practical, and appropriate for the mainland area of Surf City and the ETJ. So, in our comp plan, policies that support it are commercial growth. The town supports additional compatible commercial development, in particular, small-scale restaurants, cafes, food markets, and retail establishments. And then maintaining the small-town, family-friendly atmosphere at Surf City by encouraging low-density residential development. Policies that do not support it are development conformance with the land use plan and then managed growth. Staff is making the recommendation that the front be zoned C3 per the request as it is against 17. It's also adjacent to our most intense land use map area, so it's kind of a continuation of that. It is against 17. However, staff does not support the R5M designation. As the area supports more of an R10 designation, the adjacent residential is R10 and R15 or conditional district, which has those larger residential areas. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Thank you.
Amy, the Colonial Heights neighborhood is almost adjoining to this, that we just made a recommendation to deny for R5, is that right?
Yes, sir. They are an R10, and we'll be coming back with an R10 by right development.
And that's the almost adjoining property, basically, that I see right below it?
Yeah, there's a, on the map that's on your screen, the yellow pieces, the longer yellow pieces that have R10 written on top of them are the area that we're talking about. Yes, sir.
So, there's nothing in the vicinity that is this type of density?
Currently, no. However, the, so the CZ up here, which is the Evolve Track, that will be apartments. So, there will be density there, and that's one of the reasons we were recommending the C3 along the 17-road frontage, is that you have, it's adjacent to C3 parcels, and you'll have that underlying C3 district of the apartment complex.
What's the plan with this? Do you know what they plan to do with this?
I do know what they plan. However, we are giving this a straight rezoning, so you can't have a conditional district rezoning come in with an annexation. So, I do know what their plan is, however, I can't.
Consider it for...
Yeah, you can't consider it. And they are here, if you would like to ask them any questions. Mr. Riggs is here.
Hey, Charles.
As well as Mr. Morrison, his wife, Ms. Morse.
Do you like to hear from us? Try to stay at the podium. Thank you, though.
It was right here.
Charles Riggs, 502 New Bridge Street, Jacksonville. We are here to not, we do want to be annexed. We are here to discuss the assignment of the zoning. Mr. and Mrs. Morse are here, and then the application is in their names and also in the JL Morse Enterprises name. We do agree with the commercial zoning along Highway 17, and we are proposing R5M for approximately 80 acres behind the C3. And I can tell you that we're planning our recreational vehicle park. And we felt like that would be an ideal location, because it's being nestled behind high-density commercial. To our south, we have the high-density apartments. And it's not uncommon in most planning, you have a commercial, and then you have high-density residential, and then more moderate residential. I mean, you look at the planning charts, that's the way they're lined up in the charts, in the planning. So, we know this is just assignment tonight, and we know there's a lot of items we could, can't discuss because it's not site plan. But that's our goal. We feel like that a R5M would be appropriate with the proper buffers along the sidelines. Wetlands have been delineated. There's good space. Most of the infrastructure within the project itself would be self-contained, wouldn't put a burden on the Town of Surf City. So, I feel like the land use plan might not necessarily give credit to property of this size, 100 acres or more, that far out and adjacent to a main highway. I mean, our traffic flow is going to be going out Highway 17, you know, to the North Carolina Department of Transportation. It won't be interior streets that you have, you know, within other areas of town. So, our request is asking for the R5M. And I appreciate your consideration of that. Glad to answer any questions you might have.
I have no issue with your desired use. I do have an issue with it being open-ended, though.
I understand. We're not allowed to request annexation under a conditional use.
I understand that, but you should come back later.
Yeah. I understand. Thank you for that. Yes, sir. All right, I mean, question. Thanks. You looked at me after you were ready.
Any questions for Charles? Thank you, Charles.
Thank you.
I think I agree with Mike, with just the open-ness of it and the consistency, how we've been kind of looking at our future land use, that it would be tough to recommend something R5 just on a zone when we've had, we've already kind of denied that on the other properties within that area going forward, so. I think one thing we need to be is consistent when we're making those kind of assessments and making those kind of recommendations.
Make a motion? I'd make a motion. We go with staff recommendation of C3 and R10.
Second. I have a first and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Okay.
Amy, we got Williams subdivision next.
We do, and Mr. Charles Riggs is here tonight as well to represent the Williams family. So, this is a 7.22-acre tract located out on the island, adjacent to Lorraine Drive. As y'all are all aware, the, so this was submitted under the old ordinance. Under the old ordinance, any subdivision greater than two acres had to come to the planning board for review, so that if you have any issues or concerns, you can kind of say them now. In the new ordinance, they will only go to staff. You will not see sketch plan subdivisions in the future. So, this one was submitted under the old ordinance. So, on behalf of the Williams family, Mr. Hiram Williams is requesting that sketch plan review of the attached site plan. This review shall not be construed as consulting an official action of approval for recording the subdivision by the planning board as required by this ordinance. This review allows the planning board and the subdivision administrator the opportunity to review the site before engineering has been completed and discuss any concerns we may see. The property is zoned R5, as is all of the surrounding property. The attached site plan proposes a single-family home subdivision consisting of 11 lots. The smallest lot is over 12,000 square feet, which far exceeds the 5,000-square-foot lot size requirement. The zoning and location map is provided in your packet. The site plan proposes access by providing a connection to the existing Lorraine Drive, which is a private 30-foot access easement to the existing Holiday Heights subdivision. Lorraine Drive is centered along the property lines of Holiday Heights and the Williams property. Staff requests the planning board provide comments regarding the site, the attached site plan. We're happy to ask, answer any questions you may have about it. And again, Mr. Riggs is here for any questions you may have.
Burton happy with the turnaround for the access for the fire department?
So, I do want to note that the engineering has not been completed on there, and if Mr. Burton is unhappy, he will have the opportunity during the TRC process to discuss his thoughts with, sorry, with Mr. Riggs.
Yes, so it looks like Charles has made that configured to the appendix D, which is what's called an alternate hammerhead. If there's any dimensionary discrepancies or issues, we'll address that in TRC.
Charles, what's the use for the marsh front lot?
Charles Riggs, 502 New Bridge Street. We haven't determined whether we want to make that an extension of Lot 10 or have it a lot standing by itself. There is an adjacent easement on the adjacent property that goes to that area. So, this would be at the most 11 lots, okay? They're in good size, as you see. The street and the fire turnaround have been designed to meet fire code. We made sure of that. We're showing the sidewalks. Our land disturbance is less than an acre. Our impervious surface is less than 10,000 square feet. In previous conversations with the Town of Surf City regarding sewer, there should be sewer available for these 10 lots, these lots. There is an existing 30-foot utility easement running through the property. If you see it at the rear of the lots 6, 7, 8, 9, and 10, it's not really in the rear. It goes through the middle of those lots. That goes to an existing lift station, Surf City Lift Station. I believe we answered everything that the subdivision ordinance requires. Concerns you have? Mr. Williams was trying to keep this a low-density project.
It looks good.
Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Is it in the same vicinity as the peninsula?
No, ma'am. It's down, the peninsula's down the street.
So, none of the houses will be fronting the road, then? I mean, the main, like South Shore Drive.
I don't know the answer to that. They, the, when you say front, they may have the facade that faces the ocean, if that's what you're asking. But access would all be from one common street. There'd be no accesses on the main highway, if that's what you're asking. Yes. I try not to get into the facades with that. That's more of architecture.
I was just meant, I meant like driveways coming in.
Yes. Yeah, we try to keep it self-contained here and...
Is that a town road it's coming off of? Or is that a dirt road, paved road? It is paved, the ones coming off of?
Yes, sir.
It is private.
What's the thought behind leaving that street short of the property line? I'm just curious.
Well, there was no need to take it all the way to the property line next door. There is an existing home there, so there was no need for that. I just felt like it was, kept it more private by doing that, and plus it reduced cost on road construction.
I make a motion to approve the attached site plan.
Wait, wait. Just commenting tonight. We're not approving anything. We're just talking about it.
My comment, I like it.
I second that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Hey, Amy. General project updates.
So, we have released the Valvoline oil change from planning to go into construction review of, or building permit review. So, within the next month or so, you may see that starting to move around. The Valvoline was up here beside Watkins Flooring. So, that has been released. We don't have a big TRC agenda this month. We are just wrapping up a lot of items and trying to get comments to and from, back to the applicants that need it, and responses to our comments from the remaining applicants. In January, do expect some ordinance updates. Shaun is working on, doing some research right now on hotel parking, low-speed vehicle sales and rental locations, because that is not truly addressed in here. But in the zoning, oh, there's... Distance between bars. The ability to have an oceanfront deck did not make it back into this ordinance somehow, so the intent is just to bring that language right back in. So, there's a couple of little things that, as we've been doing some code enforcement and having some building permits come in, that we were like, oh, we did not intend for that to come out. So, you will see that in January at your meeting. Other than that, I don't have any more updates. However, Mr. David Price would like to talk to you tonight about our water, wastewater allocation policy that was recently approved by council.
Good evening. Appreciate the opportunity to speak. Those who don't know, the water and wastewater allocation policy was passed on December 3rd. I'd like to give the history and the motivations behind the policy, what it does, and how it's going to work as it relates to this board. As many of you have known, you've seen me up here more than I probably should be, stating, hey, we don't have sewer for this, we don't have sewer for that. We have a waitlist, two years, three years, five years out. We are starting to overcome those challenges. We have a project that we're currently, waitlist will be satisfied, and we have wastewater beyond that, and we have several other similar projects in the pipeline, three years out, five years out. We are starting to get ahead of the curve. So, with that being said, town staff and town council started working together to figure out the best way to go forward. Are we going to stay on a first-come, first- Are we going to stay on a first-come, first-served basis? Or are we going to try to utilize this finite resource to the benefit of the town? And the result was this policy. It was... Been working on for a couple of months now, and what it does, I'll give you cliff notes. It takes our remaining capacity and splits it into three different lists. 50% will go to residential, 30% will go to non-residential or commercial, and 20% will stay in reserve. The purpose behind that is we are such a seasonal place, we want to keep stuff a certain amount in reserve, and this could change year to year. This would be reviewed every year, not only the policy but the criteria, and I'll get into criteria later. To keep that 20% reserve, because we are so seasonal and it's very hard to do those calculations, a three-bedroom house that might be valued at 306 gallons per day, they're doing more than that in the summer, especially on that beach. That's why we want to keep that reserve and make sure that we never outrun our infrastructure. So, immediately it gets split up in three camps, and everybody that comes, you will fall into two criteria, criterias, either residential or non-residential, and the sheets are in your packet. And these criterias are based on the strategic goals of the town and the comprehensive land use plan. That's how they are rated. So, to give you... So, in order to qualify to get water and wastewater allocation in Surf City, you would need to acquire 50 points. It's still first-come, first-served within this category, once you get your 50 points, but in order to qualify at all, you need to get your 50 points. So, just to go over the non-residential first, government, public administration, public safety, life of childcare, the stuff that was really highly needed, schools, government buildings, daycares, they have their 50 points, they have to get go. Then it goes from there based on a comprehensive land use plan. Restaurants and retail with a number one on the list based on that land use plan, they get 30 points, so they just have to make up 20 points elsewhere on the list, and we go down a list based on that. Where it does get a little confusing is the mixed use. Is that counted as residential or non-residential? What was decided on is that 30% usable land. If 30% of the usable land is commercial, it's counted as commercial. If it's less than 30% of usable land is commercial, then it's counted as residential and comes out of that bank. So, once we get down there, once you get into future tax status, exempted nonprofits, they'll fall under the non-residential, they get zero points. If it's industrial, non-residential, they automatically get 10 more points for the future tax status. From that point on, they have a à la carte menu to choose from to make up the other points. This is the choice of the developer or the business owner to choose what best fits him. Now, you'll see some of the things on here, like road connections. You get 15 points by making more road connections. That is a need of the town that we are encouraging. Connection to a multi-use path, downstream roadway improvements. So, if you're not required to make roadway improvements, but you know that you can direct more traffic onto a road that's not directly in front of your property, you can volunteer to make those improvements and get your points. And these we worked on with town staff, as you see in the comment section beside it. Something else we added on these is the deduction points. This is something that is a utility-based, is, as some of y'all may not know, is when a developer comes in and they build a pump station, they front the cost for the laying of the pipe and building a pump station, but once that becomes active, that becomes town property. In most cases, that is a lifelong cost for us. The rate payers pay for that in the future forever. So, if someone decides to do that, they get negative points. They have to make those points up elsewhere. If you have less than two road connections, if you are putting all your traffic on a one road and no way out, you get negative 10 points. If it's inconsistent with the land use plan, negative five points, and those are points that they'll have to make up elsewhere. A very similar thing with the residential allocation is based on lot sizes. Based on comprehensive land use plan, it would deem that larger lot sizes, less density were favorable, so they got the most points, and as you got down to R5 and multifamily, you got less points. And it's the same kind of situation. Residential, they'll get five points for taxes, then they'll be able to à la carte choose their menus, and you add the same deduction points. The only difference between deduction points with a residential, non-residential is it has manufactured homes. Manufactured homes are negative five points. So, the way this would work in practice is this be part of the TRC process during the application, the site plan or subdivision application, the application, the criteria will be on there in a flowable form, and the policy, they'll be able to go through it, fill this out themselves, and be reviewed during the TRC process, and when it's presented to the board, we would either say, yes, they have allocation, or they do not have allocation based on these points. And I'd like to open myself up to questions if you have any.
Develop this point system?
That would be myself, Mr. Brewer, and Ms. Kimes with assistance counsel.
Good. What other towns are using this already? Isn't there some other ones, or...
We...
Research.
Researched several other towns. Kannapolis uses it. We actually drew from three different towns to create this, and a lot of it is our own. Like I said, all land use plan, all strategic goals, our past history with the town, or the challenges we're trying to overcome. The original one had a lot of architectural components. Those were removed.
It's not how much sewer you get, it's where you're at on the list?
Yes. No, it's whether you get on the list at all.
Does it place you higher on the list if you have more points?
No.
It's just... Still first-come, first-served.
It's still first-come, first-served, but in order to get the allocation in first place, you have to meet a higher bar.
I like it. Sounds good.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
Motion, second.
Have a second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting is adjourned.